Good evening, everyone. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on proposed zoning changes this evening. It's March 6, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. The proposed zoning changes are to amend the zoning map by revising the floodplain and wetland protection district and FEMA flood maps, FARM, excuse me, and the Plouffe County flood insurance study, FIS, both to be effective July 3, 2024, to amend Section 175-35 floodplain and wetland protection district, Section C and H, and to add a Section 175-40A to the zoning bylaw called the multi-family overlay district, M-F-O-D. In brief, FEMA, MEMA, are requiring us to update our floodplain and wetland protection district maps, flood insurance study, and bylaw. This was done several years ago for the portion of Abington that lies in the Cape Cod watershed protection district. Proposed changes are relevant to the portion of Abington that lies in the Charles River watershed protection district. In addition to these changes, the other proposed zoning changes we are holding a public hearing on this evening is about creating a district around the commuter rail station that allows multifamily dwellings by right. This change is part of the town's response to the MBTA's community legislation. And with that, I'll turn this over to Ms. Shea.
Okay.
Let's start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if, real quickly, we can go through the FEMA. As you stated, the FEMA were updating the flood insurance and the map, the FARM map and the flood insurance study, they both will now have a revised date of July 3, 2024. We have to make several very small changes to our bylaw that has been updated. It's a required update from MEMA. We did adopt a new bylaw a couple of years ago, but now that we're in a different world, they're doing the other watershed protection district that we're a part of. We have to update these two small sections. It is, I think, Section C and Section H, and relative to different zones, and hydraulic analysis performed in accordance with standard engineering practice that the proposed encroachment would not result in any increase in flood levels within the community during the occurrence of base flood discharge. And the second change is relative to recreational vehicles, and it lists a bunch of zones, and all recreational vehicles to be placed on the site must be elevated and anchored in accordance with the zone's regulations for foundation and elevation requirements, or be on the site for less than 180 consecutive days, or be fully licensed and highway-ready. So, in very brief, those are the changes that we are required to make if we want to keep the flood insurance in those areas of town affected by the Charles River watershed protection district. Just for everybody, that is closer to Rockland, closer to the airbase side. The rest of Abington, like 90-something-plus percent, is in the Cape Cod watershed protection district, and this smaller percentage over on the Rockland-Weymouth side is in the Charles River watershed.
Liz, I just have a quick question for you. The Schumert-Tuscan River runs through a good portion of the town.
Yes.
And actually runs near my house. Would that be affected by this?
Maybe a little bit. I actually have, we did receive our maps, and I have them here. I haven't been able to check this out because we didn't have them.
Well, it's, you know, just something people might ask.
So it's Brookline Street and French's Stream is basically where this is. It's a very tiny portion in Abington. And anybody can come up and look at these. And then I think, yeah, that Wheeler Ave is, I think, in Rockland. Yeah. So a tiny bit of French's Stream, and then down here into Abington, near Brookline Street, and then into Rockland again, because that's Nevin Circle and Johnson Terrace.
So this is largely near the old muster field section?
Yes. Yeah, very, and like I said, it's a very tiny portion of these maps. I just received them last week, and they will be available at the town clerk's office. They will stay with her during the rest of the process before town meeting. They're actually an exhibit, and people can go and read everything there. We only have one set, so I'm keeping them down there. After that, they will go with the building inspector, because he's going to be our floodplain administrator, so he will have these maps after this.
And just to clarify, what the muster fields is? That's on the other side of the railroad tracks, that street that runs down there?
West Street?
West Street, yeah.
Yes.
So on the other side of the railroad tracks.
It's West and Spruce.
Yes.
Yes, do you know why it's a muster field?
Yes, because they used to muster there during the war.
They mustered the soldiers out after the Civil War.
The war, that's right.
Well, now that we've given everybody their little piece of Abington Street.
History lesson. But I mean, seriously, it does help to locate it in people's minds.
It does. So the second part, and really the bigger proposal the board has before them is the MBTA Communities Law. I will quickly go through this slideshow. We did do this. We recorded it at the cable studio. It's been playing with Judy Barrett, who wrote the zoning, and Sean Riley, who moderated the group. Rick participated with us. So anybody can watch it anytime, but I will go through this very quickly now. So it's understanding the MBTA Communities Law, what it means for Abington. And then there's a brief slide about what is it, and it's a new zoning requirement under 40A, Section 3A, applies to 177 cities and towns. It's to address the state's housing crisis, encourage multifamily housing development, and boost the state's housing supply. It was adopted by the state legislature in 2021 and is now administered by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which, if nobody knows who they are, they used to be DHCD, and now they are the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. What is an MBTA community? There's 177 cities and towns. There were rapid transit communities like Quincy, commuter rail communities like Abington, Bridgewater, and Kingston, rail-adjacent communities like Rockland, Pembroke, and Hanover, and adjacent small towns like Carver, Plimpton, and West Bridgewater. Why is this law needed? Providing housing at a variety of scales and a wide range of price points helps to grow a healthy and more durable regional economy. The high cost of housing in Massachusetts is pushing out college graduates, young families, older adults, and people with moderate incomes, and creating more housing stock should stabilize housing prices, allow older adults to downsize, and help younger families become homeowners. So the basic requirements that the legislature set out is multifamily housing as-of-right at 15 units per acre. No age restrictions or limit on unit sizes, number of size of bedrooms, or number of occupants. A portion of the district needs to be located within a half-mile of the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station where possible. Districts must be of a reasonable size. That's actually more applicable to the rail-adjacent communities, because they don't have a train station to base their half-mile on, so they need to be of a reasonable size. And then compliance is determined by guidelines from EOHLC, formerly DHCD. What's a district of reasonable size? A lesser of 50 acres or 1.5% of the community's developable land. At least half the district must be contiguous parcels. In most cases, a contiguous area of at least five acres is required. What is zoned capacity? Zoned capacity is the number of units that could be permitted within the district by right. Abington's minimum zoned capacity requirement is 1,022 units. That number of zoned capacity requirement was provided to us by the state of Massachusetts. Zoned capacity is not limited to vacant land, a requirement to construct units, and concerned with existing units. And I feel it's important to pause here for a minute and reiterate that this is not a housing production mandate. The land within the district that the board has chosen can have existing units on it. So I think it's important for everybody at home to know that, that this is not a mandate for us to produce 1,022 units. The law does not require new housing development, require communities to pay for infrastructure to support housing development in a 3A district. It cannot override the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or Title V of the Massachusetts Environmental Code, provide exemptions or waivers to community that do not comply. What can MBTA communities regulate? Permitting can be subject to site plan review to regulate such aspects as vehicular emergency access, pedestrian vehicular circulation, architectural design, landscaping, buffering, and screening, screening of adjacent properties. Communities may require up to a 10% of affordable units, and the definition of affordable not limited to income caps under Chapter 40B. I think it's also important to note right here that we are including a 10% affordability clause in our bylaw. This will help us keep current with our current subsidized housing inventory. For every 10 houses that get built, we have to have and add an additional affordable housing unit to our affordable housing stock. So this would do that without requiring us to go out and create another affordable unit that will be created within the projects that get built, if any are. And then what is zoning? It's a locally adopted code that regulates land use. Zoning bylaws typically regulate the shape, height, and size of buildings, the distance between buildings and other land uses, what the land can be used for, which usually varies by zoning district, residential, such as single-family, duplex, or multifamily, commercial, industrial, and open space. And just as a reminder to everybody, Abington's had zoning for a long time. It was first adopted in 1954, with the zoning map adopted in 1976. In the area that this proposed district is in, we had already had a transit-oriented development district, Development District, or TOD, where this zoning is currently proposed to go. Town meeting adopted the TOD district in 2003 to support a mix of uses around the MBTA commuter rail station. The TOD zoning allows multi-unit dwellings on the upper floors of a building with commercial uses on the first floor. And the proposed zoning for the MBTA district is the multifamily overlay district, or the M-F-O-D. You'll hear that acronym a lot. So planning for the new MBTA Communities District, the Planning Board received a grant, hired consultants, and studied several areas to locate the MBTA zoning district and satisfy the requirements of the new law. The area to the west of the commuter rail, along and around Center Ave, was studied. A larger district around the commuter rail station, extending a full half-mile around the station, was studied. And the possibility of locating 60% of this district at the airbase and 40% around the commuter rail station was studied. And the fourth district, and the one the board decided on, meets the station area, land, and zone capacity requirements. It will not require any additional changes to the zoning at the airbase. And by that, I mean that I believe that we might have to go back to three town meetings, or at least two, I think three, to amend the zoning over the Abington portion. I'm not 100% sure about it, but I think that's what that would require.
I agree.
There is already multi-unit development in that area, which may strengthen Abington's major grant request for additional infrastructure funding. Here are the maps of the multifamily overlay district. Kevin put this together. I want to thank him very much. As you can see on the left, it's our entire zoning map with the area that this district is proposed to lie in, circled in red. And then on right-hand side is a blow-up of that area, so you can see exactly the parcels that are involved. So over on the top part, I guess is the best way, way up top, is the train parking lot, and then moving down is the road leading into the train parking lot with those two parcels of land on either side, which are known as Zero Summer Street. And I believe a 40B project has been approved to go there. As we cross the street, there's a 10-unit project. I believe there's a car repair shop next to that, adjacent, those two small lots on Summer Street. And then that lot in the back is the Woodlands. To the right is the Senior Center, the Dog Park, and then behind those two strips is leading back out onto Plymouth Street, is 1015 Plymouth Street, and I believe a project has already been permitted to go there as well. So as you can see here, those areas are all noted again, where Whitman is.
Can I ask a question, or do we rather wait until?
Sure. No, go ahead.
So part of this district includes the MBTA parking lot, the access road to the park lot off Summer Street, Senior Center, and Dog Park, which are both town-owned.
Yes.
Do those four things still count towards our acreage? Because we're talking a street, a parking lot, a state-owned parking lot, and then two town parcels.
So the parking lot, I'm not sure. The road, probably not, because it's already been adopted as a public way.
Yep.
But I believe we had extra.
I mean, I think the land on Plymouth, the Woodlands, and Zero Summer Street site is more than enough, but I just want to make sure that we're.
So we had 80 acres. When it got modeled, it was 80 acres, and we only needed 50. So I don't have specifically what those, the parking lot and the roadway are, but I believe we still have enough. And just so everybody knows, the state has all of our materials, and we are in pre-compliance review right now. And tomorrow, I will send the bylaw to the Attorney General's Office for their pre-town meeting review.
Was there a reason why we included the parking lot in the roadway?
I don't know. Well, I think the roadway, just because it fell within the two parcels, and I don't think anybody suggested we eliminate it, and I'm not sure where the parking lot, except that it takes us out onto Center Ave, and maybe that was another way to go out.
Okay.
So what does 18 units per acre look like in Abington? So I went around, there's a tool Mass Housing Partnership has, and it's called Residency, and you can kind of surf through it and see what density per acre looks like. So the picture on the left is 292 Central Street, and that's actually on the corner of Washington Street and Central Street over by Island Grove. If you were able to look a little to the left, you would see Island Grove. And then the picture on the right is 56 Townsend Street, which is off of Adams Street, kind of setback in between the train tracks and Adams Street. And all of these are estimated at 18 units an acre, which is what we would be looking at, which is 20 units per acre look like. So 20 units is more than our bylaw is calling for, so these couldn't be built under our bylaw. But it's 60 Dunbar Street, and on the left, and then Nine Platte Street on the right, which is off of North Ave, and I think it's a relatively new condo, I think, or townhouse. I'm not quite sure what it is, but they're about 20 units per acre. And then this is 25 units per acre, so again, under our current bylaw, proposed bylaw, these could not be built. 33 Randolph Street, which is on the corner of Randolph Street and Temple Street, the old church, which got converted into apartments, 313 Washington Street, which are apartments, and then the old Mildred Alfred Nursing Home, which, at 81 Birch Street, which also converted to apartments. And again, all of these are, 25 units are over, so they could not be built under the proposed bylaw, which is 18 units.
Couldn't be built by right?
Couldn't be built by right, exactly. They would have to get a special permit for anything over the 18 units. So this is 30 units, and it's the point at Forsyth Drive, which is off Bedford Street, and the Woodlands, which is off Summer Street. Both of them, as you can see, are 34 and 36 units, so it would be almost double what our proposed bylaw is calling for. So if you look at these, these sizes would be double what our proposed bylaw allows. Yes, they could go up again, but it would require a special permit. So what's at stake? What is the impact on noncompliance with the MBTA Communities Law? So Abington would be ineligible for the following grants, the Community One Stop, formerly Mass Works, now the programs, Housing Choice, Local Capital Projects Funds. We would also lose competitive dispoints on applications for other state grants, and you can see there's a whole long list there. And I know to some people, this really doesn't mean much, but we do get money from these grants. We have used the Real Estate Technical Services Grant on looking at the Center School, Mass Development and the Commonwealth Places, I think where the Commonwealth Places programs we're looking at applying to this year, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative we're looking at this year. The DPW has gotten a lot of grant money, and we have a list here of, I mean, this is really, I called John, he gave me some information, this is stuff we've done. But it's a lot of work that kind of gets done, and I know people say, well, you're only getting half the money, or a percentage of the money with the grant. But I think for a town like Abington, which doesn't have a lot of money to spare, that the grant money becomes an impetus to try to get some of these projects done, if we're getting half the cost, or three-quarters of the cost, or the design, or something. It moves the projects forward that need to get moved forward, whereas in the past, maybe that wasn't happening, because we didn't have any money to even get it started. So that's my feeling on the grant money. I know other people have different thoughts on it, but I think it's important that we try to stay compliant for this part of it. Because as you can see, we're now, we're in the middle of doing a trail design from the town office, library campus, to Broad Meadow Lane. 60,000 of that is from a grant. We're getting $200,000 from Green Communities to install heat pumps at the Senior Center, so we're trying to alleviate some problems they're having down at the Senior Center and move a municipal building forward into compliance with, the federal government has those deadlines looming at some point to make our buildings all net zero on the energy. And then we have $30,000 we got from the Historical Commission to repair and restore Memorial Virgin Island Grove, it's for the design, and that's moving along. So that's what I mean, and I just skipped over the $5 million for the Clean Water Trust that was going to the PFAS problem. So the important takeaways, again, we are required to remain compliant to adopt zoning to allow multifamily housing by right. We are not required, again, not required, to build 1,022 units. We have to design to allow it, but we are not required to build Unit 1. We're not required to provide any new infrastructure, such as water, sewer lines, et cetera, to accommodate new developments. And I think it's important to take a minute here to pause and say, I believe a 40B, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe if it's a 40B project, they move ahead on a line, like a water or sewer line, if there's a waitlist to get water or sewer. I believe they move up on that, because it's a 40B. That's not the case here. If we're having problems with water and we don't have enough water, they take a place in line, behind everybody else who's already in line. They don't get to jump ahead. Developments must still comply with all DEP regulations, conservation regulations, site plan review requirements, and water sewer restrictions. The proposed zoning requires 10% of a development's units to be affordable. If Abington does not adopt this zoning, we will become ineligible for state grants, and there could be other consequences. The state is taking compliance very seriously, as seen in Milton, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Liz, that, you know, for better or for worse, Milton right now stands as the example of what the state is prepared to do if a community elects not to comply.
Right.
And grants were immediately revoked, and the Attorney General, I believe, has filed suit.
She has.
So the consequences are not trivial.
No.
Another thing that's important to point out, too, is that people always ask about what our neighboring town's doing, and we know that Whitman is well along in the process of this.
They are, they're using the same consultant we're using, and they are pretty far along. They're not having an April town meeting, but I believe they'll be ready for their town meeting when it comes, which is a few months away, or a month away, a month after us, or something like that. And then Rockland, my understanding, is they've chosen a zoning district and are working on their bylaw. I know our consultant was working with them at one point, I'm not sure whether she still is, but they two are moving ahead. I know from reading the paper, there are other communities that are starting to stand up and say that they don't want to do this. It's interesting to note that any community I've read about doesn't need to be compliant until December 31 of this year. So they're not out of compliance yet, and they have, you know, nine months to make up their mind or whatever. And I think people are sort of waiting to see what else happens to Milton as well.
And other communities are moving faster. A friend of mine is a town planner in a place called Ashburnham, and Eric's town, Eric Arvini, his town is having their town meeting on March 25.
Wow.
So, you know, Eric and his team had a really short time to put this together, that they're going to go to town meeting. So I guess we're fortunate that ours isn't until April 1st.
Right.
Because it gave us a little bit more time to work on this.
A little squeezy room, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Liz, would you or Kevin have any bandwidth to pull together kind of a few examples of what other towns are doing, like reaching out to, you know, get a map of Whitman, Rockland, Situick, Ohasse, Hingham, and Hanover, just to be able to show, like, this is how other towns are handling that?
We can look. I think we're one of the first communities to be doing this.
Because I mean, there's going to be 100 communities doing it this spring.
There will be, but it depends on their.
Yeah.
I actually did look at Whitman's and Hanson's websites, and I couldn't find anything, because Hanson is another one. We were at a webinar, they put us together kind of in cohorts, so we can talk about what we're doing and take ideas away from each other, which has been a great help. Excuse me, but one of those problems is everybody else is further down the road.
Yeah.
We're almost first in line. We can certainly look, research some of that, but I'm not sure we'll be able to find it, because I'm not sure anybody's posted their stuff yet.
Yeah.
Right? They're not to the point where it's up on their website and they're moving into a town meeting.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll be happy to look.
I think it's a good idea, Rick.
Yeah.
I wonder if we would want to restrict that search to, you know, using Whitman and Rockland as an example. Whitman is very much like us in terms of a commuter rail.
Yeah.
Rockland falls into that category of an adjoining community, so their implementation of it might be a little bit different than ours, or I guess will be, by definition, not by definition.
Yeah, I just think, one, it's just good to remind people that we're not the only ones dealing with this.
Right.
But two, I think, maybe I'm a little self-absorbed about all this, but I think that we probably have a really good solution, and I think if we could be able to show people, like, this is what other towns have to kind of work around to figure it out.
Right.
Meanwhile, we're kind of like.
And I think, following up on that, when we did that forum in the cable studio, our consultant praised the Planning Board for having the transit-oriented district in place. She said it made it much easier to kind of just work off of that existing district to create this overlay district. And, I mean, not to get too much into zoning, but anybody who wanted to build something there would have options. They could either use this M-F-O-D district, which allows them to do 18 units per right, but they have some other rules they need to follow, or they could use the underlying transit-oriented district, which doesn't, it does actually give them some units by right, not an entire building of all residential, but they would have some by right, with a. have some by right with a mixed use.
R twenty would also apply, right?
I think so. I think so.
Liz, could I ask a couple of other questions?
Sure.
About the language? So I'm just looking at the dimensional requirements.
Yep.
Where did they generally come from? Is it, do we use as the underlying like the R thirty zone?
That was Judy, and it was based on getting eighteen units per acre in there with parking and plantings and walkways, everything that we need to account for.
All right. I mean, I don't think we have a lot in there that's less than thirty thousand square feet, but we don't need to tweak that or that's, that's okay number.
I, I, I think what she said to me was, don't touch it.
Okay.
I have had her and Town Council look at this again. What you guys have that I left you tonight is the most recent version with Town Council's added language about the watershed protection district. And she added a few things, like the planning board shall prepare a report. She went through and made a few changes, and then I sent it back to Judy, and she didn't make any further changes. So that's what I've given to you guys tonight. I also gave you guys, Sean Riley was unable to attend this evening, but he did send a list of his concerns. I planned on, I thought I had forwarded to her, but I will forward it to her again and see if we can modify the bike rack. He's concerned about a covered bike rack making it smaller. So one thing I do want to point out is that this bylaw is based on units for parking spaces, not bedrooms. The rest of our bylaw is generally based on bedrooms. So this is one and a half spaces per unit, period. It's not one and a half space per bedroom or any of that, so.
And again, that's because this is supposed to be relative to the train.
To the train, and people should be walking to the train and have a walkable community kind of spring up in and around, yes.
So I think one of our rules also currently is we like fifty feet between buildings?
I, I brought that up. I actually asked her about that.
Yeah.
And I think it's because you can by right have a second building on here.
Yeah.
That she left it at the twenty-five.
Okay. Do we know if our fire department will be okay with that?
I emailed them, and I did not receive a response.
All right, okay. Just looking down in terms of the fee in lieu of per unit for affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
That is, to come, we set that through rules and regulations, not through bylaw?
Yes, she did not want that as part of this zoning bylaw because it would be hard to amend later on, whereas a fee schedule is easier, it's just a vote of the board.
Yeah.
Not an act of town meeting.
Okay. Next page, we reference the vegetation bylaw. Is that our new tree canopy bylaw?
That's our new one, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep. And I think, does she specifically call, I asked her to put in there tree canopy, but she may have just referenced the bylaw.
Yeah. On the next page, we do talk about lighting?
Yes, so I added light trespass onto adjoining properties is not allowed, only because I'm having an issue with a project right now that there's some light trespass.
Yeah.
On another property, and it's becoming problematic and getting it resolved. Sean Riley calls that out and says, well, you know, maybe we should have a, be able to have a little light trap. Or, you know what I mean, more in conformance with our bylaw. We can work that out.
But is this reference in this language basically any different from our existing outdoor?
No.
Lighting bylaw?
No, just that last sentence.
Okay.
Light trespass onto adjoining properties is not allowed. And Judy didn't have a qualm with it, Amy Questle didn't have a qualm with it, Sean Riley does have a qualm with it. I did explain to him why. I asked that it be that way.
Yeah.
And I think he was okay with it.
Okay. I think that was it for this one. If I can just jump back to the flood zone ones?
Sure.
So the only maps we have are at the town clerk's office?
Yes.
Is it impossible to make copies or scan them, or?
I don't think so. Maybe somebody in the building department could do that. We did get, I believe I printed out the teeny tiny mini-me version that they directed me to online. Those I have, and I can give out copies of, but it's very hard to read anything.
Yeah, I'm just wary of telling people that the only way that you can see the map before town meeting is if they go to the town clerk's office, and there's no other way of getting them a view of it.
Yeah, I mean, I can try to scan it and get it up on the website.
Yeah.
That reminds me one thing. I've gone to the Town of Abington website recently, and it looks like it has been in redesign.
Yeah, they just announced that that they re.
We, I think we're launching a new website this week.
Reimagined it, yeah.
The, and then right now, you get four oh four, page not found, for an awful lot of the things that you try to look at.
Okay.
So unless that gets rectified, directing people to the Town of Abington website may not be the best idea.
All right. I will bring that up, but last week I posted all our stuff on the old website because I wasn't sure when we were moving. I thought March fourth was the day, but I'm not sure that actually happened.
Well, yeah, if you pull up Town of Abington, you get the new, what appears to be the new website.
Okay.
And it's not, it's, as I say, it's not functioning particularly well right now.
Can, can I also ask, according to what map is that little corner of Abington part of the Charles River Basin?
FEMA map.
Okay. Because all the other maps I see, if you go through Mass GIS, is that corner goes to, like, the South North River version, or maybe to the Boston Harbor, or maybe to the Weir River.
Is Boston Harbor part of the Charles River watershed?
It's, I don't know, it depends on the map. But I haven't yet seen one that says that's part of the Charles River. Like, just the ponds, one that I've seen sometimes, Weir River, Boston Harbor. I just, I just want to find out exactly what map they're going off that says a part of it goes to the Trump River. Because I just, I've never been aware of any water in this town heading north.
It is prepared by the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management. These materials may include revised flood insurance firm, firm index, FIS report. It's not saying what river. Town of Abington, Plymouth County, but I, I know we did the other.
Unless they're just saying.
The Cape Cod watershed a couple of years ago, and we adopted the new bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, unless they're just saying that either it's Cape Cod or it's Boston or it's Charles River, I mean. But it doesn't align with like the GIS maps that people have on W O N C.
You can download the GIS flood hazard data for your county by clicking on firm database and selecting DL button on the download column. Were you looking at FEMA maps?
I was looking at the Mass GIS maps.
Okay, these are FEMA maps.
All right, I'll take a look.
How to access your flood hazard products via FEMA's Flood Map Service Center. If you want to swing by tomorrow, I'd be happy to make a copy of this for you. But it gives me, I have a second one that just gives me panel numbers. Yeah, it's not saying what. It doesn't tell me what watershed. That's what my friend at FEMA Mima told me.
Okay.
When I called and said, no, no, we've already done this. He went, no, 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 you're in a different watershed.
Yeah, Abington is confusing a little bit.
It kind of is.
Because we're in a number of watersheds.
And a different, a lot, a bunch of different districts.
Yeah. And when I worked for Old Colling Planning Council, I was aware of that. And, you know, it would be a lot simpler if we were just in one or two.
Right, it certainly would be.
But we're not.
No.
But, I mean, the, we talked about this earlier, Liz, was that most of it is on the Rockland side of the town.
Right.
So it won't really affect the bulk of the town.
It's a very, very teeny tiny sliver of Abington that lies in that district.
Rick, I just would like to invite this gentleman who's in our audience. Sir, you've been very patient.
I always have. Nothing else to do, so it's gonna come to all the meetings now.
Yeah.
So I just, when you look at this map.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Oh, I thought everybody knew. I'm Joe Fain, one of the, want me up here?
Yeah, please.
Please.
First of all, I'm gonna go back to, this isn't an accomplishment, I don't want to do it anyway. The last time I spoke, I told the issues. I was under the impression, the distinct impression, that you had to build fifteen units per acre. And all, and I think I said to you, what I pitched is, you'd eighteen, you sound right. And so on my parcel is money, but that's what I was talking about at that. I wouldn't, I don't see that. I pitched, well, since then, I did read some of the article, I did watch.
Yeah.
I guess you call it a show. I don't know what you call it, I watched it.
Live entertainment?
Yeah, yeah, great. And even in reading it, it lent itself, but wait a second, no, it isn't.
It's not.
You have to build fifteen.
We declared that.
There's all different reasons why you can come under that.
Right.
You know, you build that.
Or you just don't want to.
Or you just don't want to.
Yeah.
Then that's the part I'm unsure, if you can say you just don't want to. Then Sean asked a direct question to the lady.
To Judy Barrett.
If you had a piece of land you wanted built less than fifteen to do, she said, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that was the version, absolutely. So I thought, oh, I'm back. And then she also said something about this. I did read, I tried to read the whole map. My problem the first time around was just reading the very beginning, and that's what it was, fifteen units per acre, it came right out.
Right, so we're at eighteen units per acre, I think, I'm not sure if you've heard that.
That's the math.
No, for Abington, we're doing eighteen units per acre, so we can fit in parking, landscaping. She did all the modeling on this and figured eighteen units, and then we can get parking and everything else into a space.
But I'm still looking at the eighteen units.
It does not have to be eighteen.
If they do, if they put weapons and they push your deck and then whatever.
Or if you had a piece of land that was high and dry, and you wanted to put two units on it, you could do that.
And so going back to where I was, so now, is the height notation thirty-five feet, three stories?
Three stories is where we are in other parts of town.
And that's wonderful, because I've pictured like, you know, eight stories. So three stories and, and less than fifteen units per acre, made me feel pretty good. So I throw it back to the board, can you reconsider my, not just my parcel, I'm only not gonna, I'm gonna put it out there. The reason that I bring it up is because going back to when I bought the land, it was zoned industrial. I already told you this stuff, you're not hearing it again. And then they changed the zone. And, you know, I can't go to all meetings, I might know the truth, but I, it can be difficult. And I had heard talk about a TOE district, wasn't quite sure what it was, but it reminded me of what I already have on my existing property on Saturday. Very good for me, you have a pop and house, and you have the business on the same parcel, works for it all. Doesn't bother anybody, I don't believe, try to make sure it doesn't. And it works for it all. And I kind of thought that's what the TOE district is, and it may well be that, I have to read the whole thing. I didn't necessarily want to see, like, over eighteen, we put the units underneath, I mean, put the business underneath and we put the units on top. Sometimes it's a good reason to happen, separate it, depending on what you might be doing in your shop. You might bother somebody right above them, so. So I said, well, TOE district would be fine. But that didn't happen. And I'd also thought, I wonder why TOE, when the area screams, R twenty, it just blew up and locked. It's every way you look, this is a, this is a single family, but they're far outnumbered by multi-family types in the US, like the Woodlands and all of them down center. I, to this day, I still haven't got a good answer as to why they would have changed the zoning of our land to R thirty. That's, you guys should know this, thirty thousand square feet per lot, no condos, no apartments, okay? They want houses there. And my land will not. That won't work, period. The whole thing again, but it's because I have an easement going in there. Oh, I can cross my own property. Now, I can cross my own property, I can, and I could have when I bought it. If, yeah, sorry, I could have put a couple, they're called industrial, they're not really industrial, they're commercial, I could put a couple metal buildings out there, rent them up to people like myself, trade people. Anyway, it worked. You could have done that, and they could have crossed my property because a couple buildings, Monica House and the, that, that could affect my existing package, it would be a runway, it would have been fine. But then I acquired that easement next door, and I thought, well, that's exclusive everything. As a matter of fact, now you could possibly do apartments or something like that, except it's home, not dirt. So you'd have to get it there, and it's no guarantee you're gonna get that. And now, they also, and they also changed, and possibly at the same time, because I acquired by agreement, by assigned agreement, that easement between me and the acre, the building next door. I acquired that nineteen ninety-nine, at the very end of the year, nineteen ninety-nine. And at that time, if you had frontage on a road, you could get into there any way you wanted. The wording changed. And instead of just saying you need frontage on a road, it changed to, the point of entry will be where you have to have your hundred feet frontage. Well, I could only get a fifty-two foot easement. At the time, that would have been fine. That was the end of nineteen ninety-nine. And I get to go back and look, but I think it's two thousand and one, town meeting, changed some of the zone, and the wording changed. And that's when it went to, well, now you need to have, that's where the frontage has to be. So now I needed areas to use easement. The bottom line is, I feel like my rights in this country, not just this town, have been denied by zoning changes. And I don't think that's right. And at some point, I have that alignment sale. I do want to do good out of this town. And you know what? I'm not even sure what I would do with that. I'm just upset that my rights have been taken away by zoning. If you guys could scuff your fingers, I know you can't. Um, just have your fingers, but it won't work. And put it back to industrial, and let me put a bill in the back? You don't want to build. I wouldn't feel too bad, because I wouldn't feel like I bought land and paid taxes on it to throw it away. I feel like, well, I wasn't told it long. So maybe in the future, maybe I need to try to get it rezoned? I don't know what the answer is. If you can look at it again, I don't think you can, because it's all, it looks like, this map you have here, it's all zoned, all data. That accommodates everything you need.
Mm-hmm.
You mind what?
Mm.
So it's all kind of, wording and some of this stuff, you have a thousand units, you don't really need a thousand units, take fifty, divide it by fifteen. So you get this floor, it's like six hundred and fifty units, you have to make a floor, it's called a floor. It's been.
So I'm not sure, because the modeling is very convoluted, and we had, we have consultant do it.
Oh.
But the state trained.
It has to be trained.
Right.
But I did read something about a floor, and it provided, or multiplied fifty by fifteen, six hundred and fifty. It was called a floor. So you have this thousand, but then they said, didn't have to reach a thousand, then they had a floor of six fifty. And then I see this now, and I don't know, I don't have like the frontage, but you're indicating that you have more than enough acres.
Yes, we need fifty, and the modeling shows we have eighty.
Eighty. So those lots come out to eighty-eight. The ones we have outlined, right?
Yes.
Come out to eighty-eight, right?
Yes, yes.
And then out of the eighty-eight, how do they obtain the number of houses? The possibility of houses, not houses, possibility of units.
Units. The state came up with that number.
Oh, the state.
And again, there's probably another very convoluted formula on how they arrived at that number. I'm not quite sure what that formula is.
Because when you start to read it, and I probably just don't have to be dangerous, but it's, when it starts talking about developable land, because my conscience is what made me really not read it. How does a train station get on there? That'll never be developed. Don't say never, say never.
Never say never.
Because that'll never be developed.
Never say never.
Until they, until they learn how to run the T at a profit.
Right.
Then you can talk about developing.
Well, everybody's riding their bike there.
And, and the senior center, that's, if you read the definition excluded... If you read the definition of excluded, then it, I've seen a center, it should be excluded, if you read it, that's the same.
I'm trying to go back.
Developable land. Developable land means any publicly owned land that is used by a local housing authority, that's not used by a local housing authority, that's just town-owned land, I think, or only. By land that has been identified as a site for housing development and a housing production plan approved by D H C A, I doubt that.
Well, Mike, we actually do have a housing production plan.
For that lot?
No, for the whole town.
For the whole town.
Oh, no, this is for that lot, this lot is...
So...
And a land that has been designated by the public owner of disposition and redevelopment, how the public and home may qualify as developable land, E C S D and at the request of an M B T A community, and after consultation with the public owner, let's say the town, that such land is in a location of possibly structures are otherwise suitable for conversion to multifamily housing, and will be converted to or made available for multifamily housing within a reasonable period of time. Not by that definition, it's excluded.
That is...
Maybe later on, maybe later on, they say, "Oh, the excluded land for this reason fits." I'm just curious, if you have my curiosity.
Then they'll tell us that. I've sent it in for pre-compliance. I've sent it in for pre-compliance.
I'm not blaming you.
No, no, I'm just saying, so the board picked some...
It's a discussion.
I know, and I'm trying to explain to you, the board picked the, the area.
Yeah.
We sent it to our consultant, they threw in their...
They should ask her any of these questions.
They are supposed to know all that information, I know, and then they ran it through the modeling, and then they came back and said, I think what I said earlier, we have 80 acres...
Because, two things. One is, you shouldn't be at least a bit nervous about presenting this to the town, because what you have here, wait a second, I mean, the F I Bs are already in there, that's going to happen, right? And the rest of it is already developed, and the part that's not developed won't ever be developed, so you don't have a problem to worry about going to the town, not that I can say.
So, if you can see on this, zone capacity under the law is not limited to vacant land.
Is not limited to vacant land.
Not limited to vacant land. So we don't have to make the whole district vacant land, we don't have to make half the district vacant land.
But it has to be land that's capable of being developed. What I'm saying is, the train station is not going to be developed.
No, but the senior centers, the dog park is...
It's going to be developed.
No, it's capable of being developed, right? It's a requirement.
No, it's not capable of being developed. Well, if you want to tell the dog people they just lost their dog park, now you got to act a bit nervous.
I will be working it, but...
No, it doesn't fit the definition, not the way I see it, but you can...
That's, that's up to them to tell us that, and if it is...
Well, bottom line is, if that's the case, then you really don't bother my name, because you don't need it. I thought, hey, it would be, it would be a good time to correct, I don't want to say the... Listen, I appreciate bullets, I really do, and that's why it's difficult to speak against a whole. But my man never, ever should have done zone R30, and you're going to say, "Well, we weren't in here, so it's not ours." But this is a chance to make a wrong right, to make a correction. Maybe that's too much to ask for, and maybe I'll come back at a later date and try to do R20, or try to do something. And I don't even know how much I want to do right here. I told you before, I'm going to give the back ends, which is back ends, that connects to another piece of the right smell, connect the right to it, I'm going to, my intent is to give that to the town, maybe more, I'm not going to say, I don't know how it's all going to come about, okay? But, of course, when I do that, I picture, well, maybe back ends, but maybe they can get the sidewalk, this 700 feet, it's like 300 feet they have on the side, they can get their sidewalk out there, if they can get some conservation. Maybe they can get walking trails and stuff like that, that's what I'm hoping for. I'd like to leave a good mark on this town, but I got to get, I got to get back my principles, and my principles are down at me saying, "You shouldn't lose the right to develop land." Even if you don't develop, maybe go through all this, try to get a free R20, and they say, "Well, we can do that." But I don't know that. I'd like to use some land, I would like to have another building back, which gives me something to do right now, other than love you. But I don't, right now, I'm not here. But if all of this gives you what you need in units, then you don't have a problem with this town. I don't know who in this town would ever say that there's nothing there that's going to bother anybody, it's not already in place. You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
Probably other people, they don't speak for us. Well, I'm not, I'm just using the term assassin, I'm looking at it. I still, I still, bewildered by some of the law sick or...
I don't just agree with you, Joe, it took me a year to get it through my head that we don't have to build 1,022 units, because when they first started talking about it...
Yeah, I saw that as soon as I saw it, and then I saw the floor, and then I was like, "But that's not there."
That's how they led with the C O R, right? It's 1,022 units, that's, that's how the C O R got led to Abington.
What is the minimum amount of units you can, is there a minimum that you have to build within what you've got outlined here?
No.
There's no? Oh, then you don't have...
It's a requirement, there's no requirement to construct units.
We're just talking about the possibilities of this, we're not talking about actually how it's going to be.
A whole lot of it seems like a possibility, a remote possibility at this point. I would think that every town, every single town that has a train station would stop this process by putting the parking lot out there.
Maybe they take that away?
You said it was already done?
It's, it's on our map, but it's gone to the state for pre-compliance. Maybe the state looks at that and says, "You can't do that," and they take that out.
Actually should.
Well, I'd be surprised. I'd say I'd be surprised, given the Barrett Consulting Group's and the O C P C input.
I agree with you.
So, you know, to Liz's credit, she's been kind of banging away at it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not using just pure nonsense.
She's banging away at this for quite a while, running this by iteratively, by different consulting groups and agencies, to try and make sure that what we're...
I'm just saying, so it's on the record, how do these things happen, you know, and why wouldn't every town stop with that? So you start, they think they put this rule out there that sounds good, but they should be doing it. And then, they give you too many methods of circumvent it, and it becomes less effective. I mean, I mean...
It's, it's never been a law to mandate the creation of housing. The state said, "Well, we've looked down by your train station, and it looks to us you could, you could create 1,022 units."
But maybe...
They have a table for the 177 communities in the M B T A 3A under that legislation. So they tell you that, and then they tell you, zone capacity is not limited to vacant land, is not a requirement to construct units.
No, it's not limited to vacant land, it shouldn't be.
No, but it's not...
No, it would crush the town, it had to be limited to vacant land.
Right, but it's not a requirement to construct unit one.
All they're saying is, all should be indicated, is that when you put this into play, and you put it, my parcel is probably the only parcel that would be, you'd be able to do something with now, and by the time you get away from the wetlands, I don't know how much it's possible, so it wouldn't be very, you know, it wouldn't be very bad. And, but what they're saying is, in the future, when you take down a building, if whatever connect, look around this room, wouldn't be an outlet at that time, but the buildings that are on center out, they begin to get old, and they get taken down. And what they're saying is, they want to allow those, those areas to conform with this rule, hoping that it would be more housing, so they take down a three-family unit and they put about six-family in there, because this zone, it'll lead to that. I think that's what they're after, they're not saying you're going to find this new zone, and it's going to be all open land, they're going to build all this out, no, they weren't saying that at all. They were saying that you need to put some zoning aside where people want to, I don't know, add on their building, have multifamily, if I have more units, when they take down a building, or whatever. Some open land like mine happens to be there, fine, it still lends itself to what they're trying to accomplish, is to increase the amount of people close to the train station for a reason.
There's a false narrative out there in some of the towns, that this is going to mean that they're going to tear down all the single-family houses and put up multiple families, and that's not true at all.
No, not at all, not at all.
But that's what people who are against this sort of thing are, are selling, I think that's what they're saying.
My, my building in front is 1872, it's still a very nice build, it's got four, I mean, single, four single beds.
Mr. Chairman, is there, is there a meeting in here at 7:00?
No.
No, is that down the hall?
Down the hall.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have the room still.
So, I, I, let's say this became, I was in that zone, I can tell you, the last thing I'm going to do is take that house down, and my shop is only, only, only 20 years old, that's still big, that's not coming down. So, you're, you're right, people just don't, this isn't the ocean, this isn't the ocean frontier. They do came down, boom, buildings, from up on Piers, above all sorts, this isn't that.
How did they stay around the grove though, so maybe the same.
When I saw some of the stuff on here, I said, "Why didn't they stay on the grove up there?" That, that, that's not, it says recreational purposes, it says on the grove. But that was, I'll say mine here, and to clear up some of the stuff, I mean, come up your rocks, tell what the law was if you like.
That's okay. I appreciate your visits.
No, I...
Maybe after repo first, but you can just leave that on the side. We'll send you a bill.
That's fine. Seen that to many people, yeah, right, that's because it's so high up here. I was looking at the train station, I said, "Yeah, right, they're going to build houses on that parcel, the parking lot, they're going to put parking underneath, and everybody to a few to work, the suburbs, that doesn't work." Enough of this time, I appreciate it, I'll come back again someday, and we'll go from there.
We get one some month?
Hopefully.
Except for August.
I'll have to come up sometimes, find out what, if I even go to that room, if I want to try to change the zoning. If you do the parking, that will...
Happy to chat.
And then I got to find out, I'll target all these things and stuff like that, if I'm going to do that parcel, that comes into consideration, get that done, until I move around water, further than just the water, how much you feed.
All right, folks.
Okay, thanks, have a good night.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Frady. Is there, does the board members, do board members feel they need to make any more comments about this at all?
Nope, I don't.
And I guess, I guess we probably could build on the T station, we leave the parking below and do two, three stories.
Yeah, do a parking garage and stuff like that. All right.
If it was ours.
If it was ours. All right, anything else?
So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, I will forward, I thought I had done it, but I will again forward Mr. Eylee's email to Barrett Consulting, and have her take a look at it, see if there's anything that could be incorporated, if you guys are okay with that. I think his biggest things were reducing the bike rack.
Fence site. The fence site.
The fence site, so the fence site, the bike rack, we've addressed the watershed protection, and he also mentions in here, a vote to amend the zoning map, but I already reached out to town council about that, and I don't think she, I don't think she thinks we have to do that, if recalling off the top of my head. Because I didn't advertise it with amendment to the zoning map, and that was my concern, that we would have to re-advertise and do this just for the zoning map, and she doesn't feel it'll be fatal to the article, so we can just move forward. So we'll leave it all as one article, and we won't have a second article to amend the map, unless council thinks it's prudent when they go over the warrant, so I'll leave it there.
I guess...
Something about pay grade.
I guess the, the one thought that I have on this, I, I think that this is the, kind of the first time that I've seen this Sean's email.
The Sean Riley one, yes, I just stopped at you guys tonight.
Yeah. And so he is, as you've indicated, making a request for a few changes, and we've kind of informally, I think what you've formally done is kind of say, "If the board's okay with it, I'll send it over to Judy," and I'm assuming that's billable time, and then she'd make, come back and, and apply proposed changes consistent with this? Is that what we're saying?
If she feels, yes, if she feels that it's not detrimental to the bylaw compliance with the state.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all she's looking out for, so do I think that fence is a problem? Probably not. Do I think the bike rack is going to be a problem? Probably not.
Okay. And I guess my only point, Liz, is that the prerequisite step is that the members of the board kind of look at these requests or recommendations, and, you know, more specifically say that we're okay with them.
Right. Do you want to do, like, a week from now, everybody can get back to me?
I'd like a little bit of time to kind of...
Sure, yeah, you just got them tonight, so...
Read that, read this and absorb those.
Yeah, send me an email by next Wednesday, by, let's say, like, 2:00, and then I can send this off to Judy then, see if she could include them.
Okay, that's good.
So what's that, March 13th? Ooh, scooching right into the Ides of March there.
So we need a motion to recommend?
Yeah, if you could do a motion to recommend if the majority of the board is okay with them by next Wednesday.
You want to make that motion?
Sure.
Someone second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else? Hearing nothing, motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.